Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call this meeting to order at 6:02 PM. If everybody could please stand and join in the place. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all. We are going to do a couple of things a little out of order this evening. We are going to go to correspondence, there is none. Policies for first reading, there are none. And policies for second reading, there are none. That brings us to the first opportunity for comments from the public. Please remember that there is always a second opportunity at the end of the meeting as well. The Board of Education encourages public expression on school-related matters. Public comments that deal with personnel matters and/or discipline issues that reveal the identity of specific individuals, either directly or indirectly, will be prohibited. As stated in Whitney Point Central School District Policy 3230, public complaints, questions of a specific nature should be directed to the appropriate office during school hours. The meeting chairperson has the right to limit and/or extend any and all discussions. His or her decision will be final. Please state your name and residency before you begin and keep your comments brief so all members of the community may have an opportunity to speak. And comments will be limited to three minutes per person. Is there anybody who would like to speak this evening? Stacy, do we have a second microphone or?
It's all right.
Okay.
My name is Rosa Gao. I live in Lille. We're going to meet in a minute.
Wait, we're having a difficult time hearing you ourselves. So hang on and we'll get you a microphone.
I come here tonight.
It's not turned on, Shannon. I'm sorry, I shut it off.
I come here tonight with a heavy heart, not to judge or condemn you. There is one far greater than I who will do that. Jesus told us that God made us all different and unique, and that those differences are good. By teaching critical race theory, you are calling God a liar and condemning our children, but you are condemning yourselves much greater in the eyes of God. He is watching you. By teaching the deviations of sexuality to God's children, you are calling God a liar. The Bible says, "He made them male and female, and it was good." Please stop teaching our children that it is okay to sin against God. God commands us to obey His word and to love one another. You are telling our children that it's okay to disobey God's command and that it's okay to hate one another. Hate and disobedience are the devil's work. God is watching, and He sees the evil you are doing. I pray that you will open your eyes and heart to the evil you are teaching God's children and ours before it is too late for them and for you. Because God is watching and sees what you are doing, and someday each and every one of you will have to answer to Him for the evil you are allowing to be taught to His children. He will be the final judge of you, your souls, because He... You need to decide whether you want to spend eternity with God in heaven or with the devil in his fiery pit of hell. We are heading into the Christmas season, the time when God showed us how much He loves us by His gift of His precious Son, Jesus. I employ you to show that same love to our children by teaching them they are all uniquely different and special. And that is a good thing, and God wants them to use those differences for good, not for evil. God sent His Son out of love for us to save us from our sins. Christmas is the season of love. Let's teach that love to our children all year long. And God sent me here, or I wouldn't be here tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there someone else?
There's somebody in the back.
Hi, guys. I just wanted to let you guys know how much... Oh, sorry, Melissa Peterson. I work for a school. I have two girls that go here. And one's on the field hockey team. So we traveled this weekend. And I was sitting next to parents of the other team on Saturday, and they were making mention how they didn't see their administrators anywhere. And we looked over and we saw our superintendent. We looked over, we saw our athletic director. Numerous games throughout the year, we've seen our principal show up. I just want to thank you guys for supporting our girls. It means so much to all of us that you guys are there to support them through everything they do.
They did a fantastic job.
Yes, they did.
I don't think I need to use that. I think I can speak loud enough. My name is Mary Lou Prindl, and I'm from Glen Aubrey, New York. And I have a few questions here. This is about going back to maybe the previous discussion I may have been trying to present someone. Who made the decision to apply for and receive the COVID relief grants? Was there any discussion on this? Could you please provide copies of all the documents and the communication pertaining to all previous current and future monies the school has and will be receiving from any and all those grants associated with COVID relief funding? Are you required to follow any and all the mandates for, at the federal, state, or local level, to continue receiving the money? What would happen if you discontinued it following any of the mandates? Can you discontinue receiving the fund if you choose to? Just continue to follow the mandates. Please provide any information distributed to the taxpayers regarding the COVID grant money. Seems to me everybody's left in the dark about this. And I just wanted to add too. What do we need this money for anyway? If you've already received it, why? What is it going to be specifically used for? Are we going to continue to support the narrative about what's going on even though it's wrong? My other concern tonight has to do with the children. Who makes the final decision about the children with the mandates on getting the COVID vaccine? And we know it's going to be very soon down the road. We're going to... Who's going to specifically make that final decision and be held accountable for it? Because these decisions, I believe we have to look more at the fact that is this going to really be a positive thing for the kids? You know, just to inform you, the FDA is funded by pharmaceuticals. We need the freedom to choose. Parents of the Whitney Point School community are those who are in charge of any of the students that attend this whole district need to have the liberty to look after their kids and have the right to decide whether they get vaccines or they don't. And now I understand it's the five through 11 that will be mandated very soon.
Mrs. Prindl?
Yes.
If you could finish your thought because your three minutes are up. But please finish your thought.
Can I finish it up later or am I... Is this it?
If you'd like to finish it up at this second opportunity at the end of the meeting, you may.
Okay, that way I don't have to rush it. All right, thank you. And my students, no, I don't need that.
We do still need you to state your name and where you live.
Linda Verhart. My kids know me. I live in Lille. Firstly, my whole life except my time moving forward. I'm a retired teacher and coach for the school. And I was sharing with Joanne before we started because I don't want to be perceived like I'm somebody who's just trying to give everybody a hard time. But every time that we try to get some positive results, nothing happens. So you have to... I feel like you have to become more and more firm in your commitment. And my commitment is to get this school to take a stand for the kids, the teachers and staff, and the parents in this district because the school has gotten into a position for reasons that we don't necessarily fully understand, we don't know who decided to go with this CARES money and how it's being spent. But I do know you have to follow all the rules that come down the pike, whether they make sense or follow the science or not. And I am here to tell you that there are people who will stand behind you if you take that stand for what is following the science, what is real truth, however you want to look at it. So for instance, I share the joy in. I have COVID antibodies. I am not going to give it to anybody. And in addition, and I know everybody likes it, well, the CDC said... The CDC says, admits, they have not documented transmission rates of COVID-19 among unvaccinated, black and white. I already gave you eighty-some mask studies. The masks are not infected, can't even cause disease with lengthy wear. So here we are again, begging everybody to do some research. And I came in tonight with a thought that... The board of members' emails are not on the school website. I can't even email you guys anything. I can send it to Ms. Sexton, she can get it to you. But is everybody like that? I don't know. I haven't taken the time to research that.
I would just like to point out, Linda, and I won't take that off of here three minutes, but you do know how emails are assigned for the school minister, correct?
Well, just like mine was, yes.
We all have emails from the school.
Okay, well, I would know that, but they're not going to know that.
They were on the website at one point.
I thought they were on the website.
I have looked three times. Well, they told me that. I looked three times and couldn't find it.
Well, I apologize for that. That shouldn't be.
Or maybe I'm looking in the wrong spot.
But our emails are on there.
Okay.
They are easy to figure out because it's cedall@e-mails...
Up to eight characters.
No, I don't think that's...
Is your full name?
I don't think it's...
I didn't think it was my full name.
Because you had an old email.
Oh, okay.
Right? Yeah. So, but, but just, you know, it's all, it's... They should be on there. If they're not on there, it's an oversight because they were at one point.
I thought they were too. I totally agree.
But thank you. If they're not on there, thank you for bringing that to our attention.
I just couldn't... I could be looking in the wrong place. Stop high.
Yes.
All right, so I came in tonight with the thought that we need to share more information. And maybe there's a time to set aside, aside from this forum, to do that just because you really can't do much here. And so my three Cs tonight were continuing education, critical thinking, and choice. And they're all things that we expect from our students as teachers. I'm going to start off with a statement from Congressional Representative Thomas Massey. This is what he says. "Who could have foreseen that the response to the very lackluster performance of the vaccines could be to force people to take them? You have to know students here have been affected with their parents losing their jobs because of these mandates. Then to tell the people who took them to take more of them, for the CDC to change the definition of vaccination, which I've already stated previously, and for those who took them and still got infected to blame those who didn't take them, which is, by the CDC's admission, untrue."
Mrs. Berthold, if you could finish your thought, please.
Yep, I'll finish and then pick it up.
Yes.
Thank you. And then for the CEO of the company profiting most from the vaccines to call their critics criminals. I saw the video myself. The statement is a reflection of the science being twisted and turned to promote a systematic, authoritarian, tyrannical, and blatant removal of our constitutional rights. And I'll pick up with a Nuremberg code when I come back. Thank you. You're welcome.
Is there anybody else? Sir?
Good evening, board members and administrators as well. I... My name is Stephen Clark. I live in Lille. Just so everyone's aware, I have a little history here at the school. I spent 20 years working in the bus garage. I just... What I have to say doesn't seem that important now. I went down to Binghamton to watch the marching band perform in the Columbus Day Parade, and they did really well. A couple of things I saw was their music actually was better than the band that won. There's no question in my mind about it, the band that was in our class. The difference being between the two. The band that won had really nice uniforms and everybody looked the same. And then Whitney Point came marching down through. And, and don't get me wrong, I'm not blaming anyone. I'm sure everyone's doing the best with what they have to work with. My goal here isn't to point fingers. I'm just telling you what I saw. The color guard marched ahead of the band, and they were dressed in black and silver uniforms. And then the band followed behind with maroon and white windbreakers and black pants, which I believe, I know we did, and I think every other student bought their own windbreaker and pants themselves to march in the parade. And I think that probably led to the score they received bluntly. And then when the kids were loading the buses, it was difficult to tell Whitney Point from Johnson City. We had maroon and white windbreakers on, and so do they. And that brings me to my other point I just want to mention that I've seen this, I don't know, some sort of deterioration over the years. It's the Whitney Point Golden Eagles. Our school mascot is the Golden Eagle. Here's my yearbook for Exhibit A here, and it says Golden Eagle on it, okay? And this sign has been tacked up in my barn ever since we've lived there. And it says Whitney Point Golden Eagles on it, okay? And I've seen white creeping into our uniforms and everything. School colors are maroon and gold, Golden Eagles. Our mascot, last I saw it, was a bald eagle. No one wants the word bald in their school mascot. We should have a Golden Eagle as our mascot. The other day I happened to be in the bus garage, and there's an inflatable bald eagle in there. And that's not our mascot. We're the Golden Eagles. And I just think we should remember that and stick with maroon and gold as our colors. And I think the band would do better with some uniforms. That's all.
Thank you very much. Do we have anybody else? Okay, thank you very much, everybody. As I stated before, there will be a second opportunity at the end of the meeting. At this point, before we continue to commendations, we are going to go back. We do have a need of an executive session. It is to discuss contractual personnel and confidential issues. May I have a motion? Thank you, Chris and Eddie. All those in favor? Any opposed? Any abstained? Okay, we will be back as quickly as we can. Okay, we will come back to regular session at 6:45 PM. And that brings us to commendations. Okay, to begin, we'd like to commend Ms. Murphy Hayes for organizing and for organizing, and the many, many volunteers for assisting with the 57th Whitney Point Cross Country Invitational held on Tuesday, October 19th, 2021. And the Whitney Point Varsity Swim Team for their showing at the IAC Championship held on Saturday, October 23rd, 2021. Mr. Hartley and the High School Student Council and PTA along with other student volunteers and the many parents and staff members for their participation in great outfits for the trunk retreat held at the High School Bus Loop on Wednesday, October 27th, 2021. The Carly Adams Primary School for the Annual Halloween Parade held on October 29th. As always, awesome and joyous event. The Whitney Point Varsity Field Hockey Team for winning the Section 4 Class C Championship held on Friday, October 29th, 2021. More to come on that. The Whitney Point Varsity Field Hockey Team for winning the New York State Class C Regional Championship held on Saturday, November 6th, 2021. And... The Whitney Point Varsity Field Hockey Team for winning the New York State Class C State Championship held on November 14th, 2021. And for today being Broome County Whitney Point Field Hockey Day. Thank you for the county executive for coming out and proclaiming that today. Amazing team. The Whitney Point Central School District in Whitney Point...
We have a video.
Oh!
You would definitely be a much better helper to help us. I'm old school. I need to have that professional base base. I don't use my phone.
You, HJ, your care, your way.
The Whitney Point Field Hockey Team are state champions. The Eagles earned their seventh state title. Sixth title since 2014 yesterday in Long Island. They know that Jesus died and will celebrate during ninth period this afternoon. Teachers, staff members, and Whitney Point students gathered outside in the halls to celebrate. Each member decked up with their medals. Of course, the school's colors, senior Taylor Petrie and Kaylee Lynch. This state title is a great way to cap off their time as an Eagle.
It's just unbelievable having to work so hard after really...
Maybe we should replay that so we get the volume right on.
The Eagles are state champions once again. The Eagles earned their seventh state title. Sixth title since 2014 yesterday in Long Island. Today, though, the team is back at school to celebrate. During ninth period this afternoon, teachers, staff members, and Whitney Point students gathered outside in the halls to celebrate the team. Each member decked up with their medals. Of course, the school's colors, senior Taylor Petrie and Kaylee Lynch. This state title is a great way to cap off their time as an Eagle.
It's just unbelievable having to work so hard after really being crushed one year. It feels great to have a comeback and to be on top again.
It was amazing. We worked really hard all year for this. Our goals were to trust each other and to just work together and have fun. And I think we really did that.
Both these two are headed to college. Their field hockey careers at Whitney Point might be over, but their college careers are just getting started. Taylor's planning on studying adrenomy, adronomy, and handle science. And Kaylee is studying architecture.
So there was lots of coverage for that on a number of different stations. And then, as I said, they were out there again today, being honored by the county executive. They're certainly an exceptional group of young ladies. And then the Whitney Point Central School District and the Whitney Point Business Executive Zach Woodard and District Office Secretary Marc Stahl for their work on the application to the Whitney Point Central School District on the behalf of the Whitney Point Central School District to Utica National Insurance Group's Safety Excellence Award. Whitney Point was awarded the highest award, titanium, with honors, which also earned the district a $500 check. Thank you very much. Lots of good news. Old business, we have none. That brings us to our consent agenda. May I have a motion to approve the consent agenda? Thank you, Eddie.
Second.
Thank you, Chris. All those in favor? Any opposed? Any abstained? Okay. On recommendation of the superintendent that the Board of Education of the Whitney Point Central School District create one position of a grants coordinator effective November 17th, 2021. They have a motion? I have Tom and Chris. Any questions or comments? So in the district office, we've had some shifts. We had some retirements for different positions. And we, over the last number of years, have made a concerted effort to apply for many different grants to bring more opportunities into the district. And very fortunately, we've been awarded many of these grants. The problem that we've run into, particularly during the pandemic when we're so many swamped with so many other things, is that each and every one of these grants has very specific criteria and timelines and rules and things that we find ourselves barely managing. And so in really instead of some other, like, district office-type positions that we've had in the past, we really felt like a person who was tasked with managing all those specifics about all the different grants so that we make the most of the funds that we have and we make sure that we really use them well. That's why that position is being created. It's a different need that we have at this point in time. And, you know, I think we mentioned earlier that grant funds can also sort of pay for itself for this position.
Isn't some of the preface stuff grant funds?
Mm-hmm. It's all grant funds. That's all. Those... I mean, that was kind of the beginning of the trying to get competitive grants. It's like, wow, look, there's this whole world of things that you can apply for. But so that, that's part of it. And but then we have gotten some school to farm-to-school grants and architecture, other options that have come up that we are able to, like, have different things in the TRA greenhouse and all of these things. But like, and you probably know, if you've had any work with grants, it's like every single one has very specific things that have to be done and timelines, and funds have to be used in this way and that way. It's just, we want to make sure we're maximizing the funds that's really having an impact on student learning.
Is this position in full time doing?
It's going to be full time. Any other questions from the board? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained? Approve the appointment of Nicole Langton, term substitute elementary teacher for the 2021 to 2022 school year effective November 17th, 2021. They have a motion? Thank you, Chris. Thank you, Eddie. Any questions or comments?
This is for Rachel Phillips, the Dean Raffens, and Nicole is here. Here she is. Doing a great job, and we're so thankful that she's here for the business year. Thank you, Nicole.
Any questions from the board? All those in favor? Any opposed? Any abstain? Congratulations. Approve the appointment of Rachel D'Amico from part-time teacher's aide to full-time teacher's aide effective November 17th, 2021. They have a motion? Thank you, Tom. And a second? Thank you, Chris. Any questions or comments?
This is
You guys able to hear that? On your telephones. Any questions from the board? All those in favor? Any opposed? Any abstain? Approve the appointment of Kelly Kowman, full-time teacher's aide effective November 17th, 2021. They have a motion, please? Thank you, Eddie. Thank you, Chris.
This is a new position for a student with a one-to-one need.
So it's a new position for a student with a one-to-one need. Any questions from the board? All those in favor? Any opposed? Any abstain? Approve the appointment of Becky Wilcox, full-time teacher's aide effective November 17th, 2021. They have a motion? Thank you, Chris. And a second? Thank you, Tom.
And this is a position that is also new for a one-to-one need this year.
Any questions from the board? All those in favor? Any opposed? Any abstain? Approve the appointment of Jessica Cafferty, part-time teacher's aide effective November 17th, 2021. They have a motion? Thank you, Tom. And a second? Thank you, Chris.
This is a position that Rachel Phillips had.
Okay. Any questions from the board? All those in favor? Any opposed? Any abstain? Approve the appointment of Scott McIntyre, maintenance mechanic effective November 17th, 2021. They have a motion? Thank you, Eddie. And a second? Thank you, Tom. And this is Okay. And I know that Scott is here as well.
Scott.
Any questions from the board? All those in favor? Any opposed? Any abstain? I am going to miss you, Scott. Approve the appointment of Michael Pelzal, groundskeeper effective November 1st, 2021. They have a motion? Thank you, Eddie. Thank you, Chris.
And this is a position that was held by
New position.
No, this is, no, this is a new position, right? Okay.
We created it until last quarter.
I didn't know that. I should stop reading this down there.
Any questions from the board? All those in favor? Any opposed? Any abstain? Approve the appointment of Lance Laude, maintenance A head cleaner effective November 1st, 2021. They have a motion? Thank you, Tom. And a second? Thank you, Eddie. And this is Okay. Any questions from the board?
How'd you do on your Fisher trapping?
All those in favor? Any opposed? Any abstain? Congratulations. Approve the appointment of Emily Martin, cleaner effective November 17th, 2021. They have a motion? Thank you, Chris. And a second? Thank you, Eddie. And She worked over the summer, though. Any questions from the board? All those in favor? Any opposed? Any abstain? We're gonna move to the identity now. Approve the four-year probationary appointment of Leslie Horstline, special education teacher in the special education teacher tenure area effective November 29th, 2021. The probationary period of November 29th, 2021 through November 29th, 2025 is tentative and conditional only, except the extent required by the applicable provisions of Section 3012 of the education law. In order to be granted tenure, the teacher must receive composite or overall annual performance. Oh, it's a three-year? Excuse me, it's being changed to a three-year probationary period. Receive composite or overall annual performance review ratings pursuant to education law Section 3012- D of either effective or highly effective for the required number of years. And if the teacher receives an ineffective composite or overall rating in the final year of probationary period, the teacher shall not be eligible for tenure at that time. They have a motion? Thank you, Chris. And a second? Thank you, Tom. Is that taken here? She's on Zoom. We have any questions from the board?
So she is going to be taking the position. We had a position located in the high school, specialized in self-safety position. And on the other hand, it is shifting into that position. So we had a position that Amanda had, which is across buildings with students who have some very individualized needs. And so Leslie's gonna be taking over, and she has a background in
Any other questions from the board? All those in favor? Any opposed? Any abstain? Congratulations, Leslie. Approve the appointment of Denise Yalch, full-time teacher's aide effective November 17th, 2021. They have a motion? Thank you, Eddie. And a second? I have Tom. And
Denise Yalch, we had a number of shifts in positions as we see. That's other openings. And Denise hasn't worked in the varsity and is now officially going to be
Any questions from the board? All those in favor? Any opposed? Any abstain? Approve the appointment of Bruce Anstey, bus driver effective November 17th, 2021. They have a motion? And a second? Any questions or comments? I guess we can't ever get too many bus drivers, so. Any questions from the board? All those in favor? Any opposed? Any abstain? Approve the following coaching recommendations for the 2021 to 2022 school year. Boys wrestling, modified, Jesse Hartley, unpaid coach, Richard Ballard. They have a motion? Thank you, Tom. And a second? Thank you, Chris. Any questions or comments?
Just always appreciate the unpaid coaches that do a lot. And we've been around a long time, so we really appreciate it.
He has a lot of experience to impart. All those in favor? Any opposed? Any abstain? Approve Leah Humphreys to attend the Whitney Point School District for the 2021 to 2022 school year and that tuition be waived. They have a motion? I have Eddie and Chris. Any questions or comments? All those in favor? Any opposed? Any abstain? Approve the memorandum of agreement between the Superintendent of Schools and the Custodians Association effective November 1st, 2021. They have a motion? Thank you, Eddie. And a second? Thank you, Tom. All those in favor? Any opposed? Any abstain? Refunding resolution. Summary refunding bond resolution of the Whitney Point Central School District, counties of Broom, Schenango, Fortland, and Tioga, state of New York, adopted November 16th, 2021, authorizing the refunding of all or a portion of certain outstanding serial bonds of said school district, stating the plan of refunding, authorizing the issuance of not to exceed $250,000 refunding serial bonds of the school district and making certain other determinations all relative thereto. They have a motion? Thank you, Chris. And a second? And a Tom? Zach, do you have anything you wanted to say about that one?
Yeah, I mean, the district works with a lot of different financial consultants. One of them is fiscal advisors out of Syracuse. They're always checking like the current market rates, we're doing our debt. And they found an opportunity where we could refund, basically like refinancing mortgage or refinancing some of the school debt. And through that, we'll net about $77,000 in savings, so could move all around.
Any questions from the board? All those in favor? Any opposed? Any abstain? Accept the anonymous donation of $1,000 for books and materials for the Carly Adams Primary School. They have a motion? Thank you, Chris. And a second? Thank you, Tom. Any questions or comments? Stay here.
Yes.
Whoever it is. I know that they will be well-used. All those in favor? Any opposed? Any abstain? Accept the donation of $37,676.72, the life insurance payment from Virginia Hills Estate. They have a motion? Thank you, Eddie. And a second? Thank you, Chris. Any questions or comments?
So this one really came out of the blue and obviously very appreciative. But I was approached about a month ago from a life insurance, again, agent out of somewhere in Midwest, trying to track down the beneficiary to Virginia Hills Estate. And in her will, she left her life insurance money to two organizations, and we were one of them. A lot of hoops to go through, but we were able to do everything needed, and we received that check last week. And again, I mean, people that don't know Virginia Hill, she basically dedicated this district for over 50 years. So again, it was kind of amazing, apparently it knew her to know, and they weren't even that surprised. They said, you know what? It makes sense, that's something she would have done. So you'll see another resolution coming up to do something good with that money. But again, I think it's a good story all around.
I knew Virginia quite well, having worked here for a few years. What a woman. Just what a woman. Never had a driver's license. Always drove to work, Lynn Simpson or somebody else. But you talk about a sweet lady, new job, and I just can't, I think, very highly of her always getting. And what a woman, what a woman. This was her first job at 18, and she's stayed here all her life.
That's pretty incredible.
And she's still making an impact after her life.
That's right.
And will continue to do so.
Yeah.
All those in favor? Any opposed? Any abstain? And approve the establishment of the Virginia Hill Scholarship Account. They have a motion? Thank you, Chris. And a second?
Second.
We just need to just keep moving. I look forward to seeing how this, at the graduation, the first time that we were awarded a scholarship.
Yeah, there was really no rule or guidance on how it would be dispersed. But we're gonna leave it up to the high school guidance committee and the principal and figure out how they want to do it. But we're open to ideas, and I think we kind of know what Virginia's body of work was. So I think we'll find some good uses for those funds in the future.
Excellent. All those in favor? Any opposed? Any abstain? Approve the unit cost methodology proposal for Broom-Tioga Bosse Services for 2022 to 2023. They have a motion? Thank you, Tom. And a second? Thank you, Chris. Any comments or questions? I still appreciate, Tom, that you pushed them, and they put the changes in red for us, so we know what the changes are. All those in favor? Any opposed? Any abstain? Approve the substitute rate of pay schedule effective November 29th, 2021. Eight substitutes, minimum hourly wage as per New York state law. Daily non-certified teacher substitute, $90 per day for seven hours. Daily certified teacher substitutes, $120 a day for seven hours. Long-term certified teacher substitute, $165 per day for seven and a half hours. And that will need the approval of the superintendent. LPN substitute, $17.50 an hour. Up to 89 days in the same assignment, no retroactive pay for previous daily work, no benefits. Term certified teacher substitute, salary and benefits per teacher's association contact, contract. Finite period of time equal to a semester or more in duration, no retroactive pay for previous daily or long-term work. Substitute teachers working a half-day, half the hours of a full-day substitute will receive half the pay rate for the appropriate substitute category. They have a motion? Thank you, Chris. And a second? Thank you, Tom. Any questions or comments?
I have a question. I'm just gonna say that we are looking to attract, we've always been able to, you know, the substitutes who work in the district because they've worked here in the past or they just like living in our district. But as everybody knows, it's very competitive out there to find workers. And now, more than ever, it's essential to have substitutes here working in the district. And with the rise in the minimum wage, it's like all made our pay expectations. So they're hoping that we're able to, or at least basically to improve here.
Yeah, so I have a quick question. First of all, we needed to do it. I mean, I'm getting emails daily to college, do you have any students that can sub? I mean, we even have changed our student teaching contract with our schools so that our student teachers can actually substitute teach for the teachers they're with, because we know the districts are paying right now. But I do have a question on the certified teacher substitute. Now, is that the New York State certification that a student can get? Is it that what you're classifying there?
That means a teacher, that means a certified teacher. So if we have like a retired teacher, they're a certified teacher. We have, so like, you're actually a certified teacher. Not like they're not to be certified as a substitute.
I see what you're saying. So I guess, is there a category? Or for the certified, is it certified substitute teacher? What's the other?
We have not ever had, so this is, this is just pretty much the language from what was already, and usually in our New York, we had that, and we just upped the rates. But no, we've not ever, we've not ever found anybody who's had that certification. But if it becomes, you know, more prevalent, then that would certainly be something we would consider, somebody who's not for that certification.
Yeah, because we are seeing more students do that before they get their teacher certification to be able to get a little better pay. So maybe it's something we can look at or think about.
Thank you. Any other questions?
There's a comment, I know, I've mentioned in the past, and I'm glad to see that the rate's going up so that we can get some more, better qualified subs.
And just more subs. Which is more subs.
And we don't have anybody that's blown our bodies.
Yeah, we did it in the past just.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain? That brings us to superintendent updates.
I'm just the, I mean, it seems now like a long time ago, but we, since our last board meeting, we did have an incident that did prove to be somewhat scary for people in our community. I just wanted to make a couple of brief comments about school safety. We, as a district, as all school districts, we have safety plans and protocols in place in all of our buildings. During that episode, and what happened was there was a threat online that sort of spread all over the country. And then it got reposted, and people put like different school districts on it. And then it found its way to Whitney Point, that somebody posted Whitney Point, and then a picture of that threat here in school. We were assured by the state police that, you know, they had thoroughly investigated, that this was something that was spreading on the internet. But it's, as things do, spread very quickly on social media. And as you might expect, it was very scary for families, and people were unsure about sending their children to school. We've worked very closely with law enforcement, and so we thank them very much to make sure that it definitely was not a threat. But during that time, there were a lot of questions raised about, well, what does the school have in place? And we don't get to see the plans, and we don't know that you know what you're doing if you have an emergency. And so, and just very briefly, I mean, while, whenever something happens, I mean, we always look at our plans and update our plans. But whenever there's some kind of incident or it brings something to the forefront of our attention, it makes us realize, you know what? Let's, let's, let's spend some time revisiting this. Let's make sure that the practices and the procedures that we have in place are up to, up to date. And they are, they do consider the, you know, the new kinds of threats that might be out there. So that is something that we are going to do. But we just want to make sure that people know that we do do that training, that we do, you know, follow guidance and have safety plans in place. The problem is that they can't be public. So our district's safety plan is public. But that's pretty, that's just like a skeleton of a plan because we can't share what our safety procedures are out in the public because then that would compromise our safety. So I know that's unsettling for families to say, well, I don't know what your plan is, so that, that makes me very uncomfortable. I just briefly wanted to share that that's the rationale for that, that we can't, you know, we just can't tell you that we would do A, B, and C if this happened because then somebody who had mal-intent would know that also. But there obviously is nothing more important than the safety of the fourteen hundred students that are here every day in our school. It is something that we're going to take a new look at because the world does change. And, you know, there could potentially be different kinds of threats than we've considered. So we always look at it as a priority, but we're going to take a little, a new dive to make sure that we are, you know, auditing our practices regularly and making sure that we're seeking advice from experts to make, to make sure that we are up to speed on everything that we need to do to make sure that everybody's safe and secure here. I do ask that, you know, when these things, and hopefully this won't happen again, that if you hear somebody talking about it, we are definitely working with law enforcement and making sure that we're taking our lead from them. And they sometimes take a little time to let us know that, yes, we're sure it's okay. And, but we, you know, definitely consult with them, and they are very, very helpful and responsive to the schools. So, thank you.
That brings us to our second opportunities for comments from the public. The Board of Education encourages public expression on school-related matters. Public comments that deal with personnel matters and/or discipline issues that reveal the identity of specific individuals, either directly or indirectly, will be prohibited. As stated in Whitney Point Central School District Policy three-two-three-zero, public complaints, questions of a specific nature should be directed to the appropriate office during school hours. The meeting chair person has the right to limit and/or extend any and all discussions. His or her decision will be final. Please state your name and residency before you begin, and keep your comments brief so all members of the community may have an opportunity to speak. And comments will be limited to three minutes per person. Jennifer, I ask you to, thank you. Is there anybody who would like to speak first?
Mrs. Head.
My daughter. Why, I'm going to be good. So you say?
My name and where I live?
Yeah.
Jessica Head, and I live in Lyle, and I've been a teacher here for twenty-four years. And I wasn't going to speak, I usually don't. But on your last comment about the safety, I've never not felt safe in this district. And I've been here for a long time. So when things ever come up like that, I voice my concern to whoever. And when I get the, we're good, we're okay, we got it, that's what I tell my kids. That's what I tell the community, we're good, we got it. I wouldn't be here for twenty-four years and continuing to teach every single day with my littles in the CEA if I didn't feel safe. So, thank you. And I know that this comes to you guys, and it's heavy, and I cry a lot. Is Dan here? Yeah, I still cry, Dan. But I just want to say thank you because I've never not felt safe. You tell me you got it under control and we're safe, my kids and I pack up and we go to school. So, thank you.
Next?
If somebody can't handle it, just let me know.
Do you mind using it? It's easier for the people that are on Zoom to hear you.
Okay. Thank you. Now, I guess I got it. I might have to have the whole one because I might be like reading something.
Well, I thought I was moving.
Oh, first of all, I'll just finish up with this part. Thanks. My last part here that I wanted to communicate was, who makes the final decision, the choice, for the children of the Whitney Point School District? And of course, this is in reference going back with the vaccine. And I think I already previously mentioned that the FDA is funded by pharmaceuticals. I don't know how many people here have ever read Linda's studies about different things that she has passed out in previous board meetings, but that was very informational. I'd like to mention about Dr. Robert Malone, who is a well-known virologist in, and he discovered the mRNA technology used in the vaccine field. This is what he did last month. He spoke at the International COVID Summer about the corruption of pharmaceutical industry, the risks associated with mRNA vaccine. This is the first time in history the world's population has been used for mass clinical testing in an experimental vaccine. This is a violation of the Nuremberg Code. Dr. Malone warned that this technology carries risk of cardiac inflammation and autoimmune reaction particularly in the young. And he spoke very clearly, when I was listening to this, to children. There are going to be children who will die. And how many children will die? How long does it, is it going to take? To wave up and whether it be across, it's pervasive all across the world or wherever. This is something that will be on your conscience of people who are not seeking the truth and finding out the exact what's in this, and why is this being forced upon the community children? I just got a little thing here. So, here's another rule point. I have heard that when I ask about certain things, I've heard, we have to follow state guidelines or the Department of Health. That is not an excuse for any of the board members to roll over and do nothing. You can still use your voices to question or to write letters to the state ed department with what's best for our district and our children. Not questioning or not relaying what community members want is not serving the children in our district.
Mrs. Prindl, I do need you to finish your thought, please.
Okay, I got one, two sentences there. Okay. I'm not asking you to break the law, but as a Whitney Point resident, I, it's not okay to use school facilities to administer an experimental vaccine on the children of this district. So where does accountability fall? When a child dies or has an adverse reaction on the school property? And you don't need to support the propaganda that's sent by encouraging, by the school, encouraging this vaccine. Health choices are between the doctor and patient. Thank you very much. I appreciate you listening to me and my information.
Thank you. Are you up next, Mrs. Burkhardt?
Will anybody else?
I don't see anybody waving or jumping up and down back there.
Are we jumping up and down? So just a moment of levity, if I may. There was one time when I was a little afraid, and that's when a bull got loose. And chased my class up the hill twice. Once for that one, and then, and here's the funniest part. I had a student who, like, this is the top-of-the-line kid, just love these kids. She's, she's standing there raising her hand like she has a question in a class of the sport she's currently on a Division One scholarship for. And I finally go, what? And she goes, there's that bull again. So off we went, but anyway. Because everything's been kind of, so anyway. All right, can we interact at all? Because I just want to know if you've ever looked at the Nuremberg Code. Anyone over here ever looked at the Nuremberg Code?
I have.
You have homework, will you? I think there are things that need to be stressed about the Nuremberg Code. Revisiting the whole idea of choice and people making their own health decisions. So I'm just going to highlight, there are ten tenants, so to speak, on the Nuremberg Code. But generally speaking, the standards that physicians have to conform to in carrying out experiments on human subjects is accepted worldwide through the Nuremberg Code. And it was, of course, a result of what happened during World War II. And it established an ethical medical behavior for scientists, doctors, anybody looking to advance any kind of medicine experimentation, whatever. And the big thing, I think, that people are questioning is that it very clearly states voluntary informed consent of the human subject. That is why they have to have so many animal studies as part of the process for any new drugs or vaccines or anything along the way, which typically take ten to twenty years. The principle of voluntary informed consent protects the right of the individual to control their own body. It also recognizes that the risk must be weighed against the expected benefit. And so much hinges on the vaccine. I know there's no mandate now, but it's going to come, it's coming to other parts of our country and our state. You have to know it's coming. And unnecessary pain and suffering must be avoided. So who looks at VAERS? Who knows what VAERS is? We, you know what VAERS is? Look it up, okay? It's the, basically, it's the government site that registers adverse effects to vaccines. And you can very easily find the US data, this is from November fifth, as well as the worldwide data. And I think that you might be shocked to know that worldwide, this is worldwide, from December of nineteen ninety, so we're talking thirty-one years, there were eight hundred and forty-nine thousand one hundred and ten adverse reactions. Since December of twenty, we're talking probably about eleven months, the world has surpassed that number, eleven months, to eight hundred and seventy-five, six hundred, eight hundred and seventy-five thousand six hundred and fifty-three. So immediately, we know it doesn't work, people are getting sick, and does the risk of pain and suffering really validate any forthcoming mandates or any mandates that some of our students' parents are currently, have had placed on that?
Mrs. Burkhardt, I do need you to finish up your thought, please.
So I guess I really wanted to encourage everybody to look up the Nuremberg Code, take a look at the VAERS numbers. And Harvard did a study not long ago that they estimated as little as one percent of adverse effects are even reported. So it's a minimum number on that document. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have anybody else? Okay. We will then move to Board of Education comments.
I made a comment a couple of board meetings ago about the criticalness of cleanliness and sanitization in the buildings, especially at this time with the COVID pandemic. I asked for some help, but I'm not necessarily good at putting words together. So this is what's presented to me, and I'll tell you by whom afterward. Goes this way. Frontline workers. The employees within essential industries that must physically show up to do their jobs. Before the pandemic, frontline workers were unknown, overlooked, and undervalued. Despite this, throughout the duration of the pandemic, they have valiantly reported to work, demonstrating courage, resilience, and commitment to service above self. In this district, I think of the custodial staff, teachers' aides, cafeteria workers, all who risked their personal health to ensure the daily operations were seamless, that student well-being was prioritized, and that we as a district could achieve our mission. They took on additional cleaning duties and served hundreds of bag lunches every day. It is simple. Our district would have and is unable to operate without them. So now, I urge you all to consider if we are supporting compensating our frontline workers. I fear that if we don't have an honest conversation and act to demonstrate that we value their work, that absenteeism will become increasingly widespread. Our district will be forced to confront what is being referred to as the Great Resignation. And our ability to serve students will be fundamentally compromised. Written by one of our students, recently graduated from here, my grandson Evan Maslow. Because he can put words together. He does it for other people that are seeking peace. Well, I know that this area, for a long time in our society, has managed those people for a long time. And if we don't value this point in time, if cleanliness and sanitization and things aren't important enough, we've got something we need to act on. I'm talking to us board members, but we also need the support of the community. Thank you.
Thank you.
There's only three of us. So, first of all, thank you, Eddie. And I want to say thank you, Jessica. I feel very safe when I come to the school. When I was a PDS coordinator for SUNY Portland, I remember causing a lockdown. I remember Mary Herbert was a superintendent, and Joanna Knapp was the principal. And I had dropped off iPads for the school to borrow at the back door. And you didn't know who I was, but they figured out by the video, that looks like Chris Whittle. Yeah, but I caused the lockdown. So there's a little bit of lightheartedness too, so, but. And my grandson that morning, he lives with me now, goes to school here at Whitney Point, knew what had happened, and I said, if we got the message, you're safe, you're safe. He goes, I'm going to school, Grandma, I haven't missed a day yet, and I'm not going to miss a day now. So I think that's what's real important.
So I think that's what's real important and I thank you for all that you're doing. So I just wanna say that. And I do know what the Nuremberg Act is. I actually have to be certified for it every three years. I know what all those things are that you're talking about. I thank you, Mrs. Prindall, Mrs. Burkhardt, and I appreciate it very much, what you have to say. And I know that sometimes we look like rocks here, but we are humans. And we do voice our opinions. We can't always say what we do, but I just want you to know that we are human and we do voice our opinions to the people that we need to. So I just wanna say that. And then, thank you. Yes, we need band uniforms. And I think they already know that. And I do agree, it's golden eagles, not bald eagles, there's a difference. So I wanna thank everyone tonight and all of our students in the back too.
Thank you. I just wanted to kinda piggyback on the safety thing as well. I thank you for everybody mentioning it. I had an occasion to be in my workplace where we had a speaker come in about workplace safety and I was shocked. This person is an officer in this area, has worked in SWAT. And Whitney Point School District was brought up during our time. And he mentioned that he was impressed with this, what they had in place here. And where I worked, there were about six or seven of us that were in the district. He didn't know that, he just brought it up. So this was totally outside. This was a person that knows, that has also worked with the district, that helped them on their plan. He knows what's behind the scenes. I was very impressed. I was anyway, but I was even more impressed. It just came up out of the blue. So if anybody's worried, yes, things could happen, but boy, we're in good hands. I really appreciate that. Also, Eddie mentioned about the workers. I mentioned it before, I know everybody's doing above and beyond, they're doing a lot of extra work. There's a lot that's been asked of them. I have done a lot of those jobs. I'm married to people that do these jobs. I appreciate it very much. And I just wanna say to the district, everybody, everybody that's involved here, thank you for making this so that we are here doing the things that need to be done. I know it's very difficult, but I can't thank you enough for all that everybody in the district does. I mean, students, everybody, for doing what they need to do to make this work. Thank you.
Yes.
Oh, yeah. Oh, there we go. Okay.
Yes.
So he, sorry.
Yeah.
Scroll way on it, I'm sorry. So this is from our other board member, Dinae Criver. She stated, she's glad to see that there was a new bus driver was hired. She was so disappointed that the kids at the TRA were chosen to attend this teen program at BOSI's but couldn't participate due to a lack of driver.
All ready? That does. Have it when you're done with it, turn it off. Okay, that brings us to the end of our meeting. I just wanna mention to the students that are back there that any one of us can sign your sheet. Please make sure it is filled out. We will not sign a blank sheet for you. We are going to adjourn the meeting at seven thirty-seven. They have a motion? So, thank you, Chris. And a second?
Second.
Thank you, Tom. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain? And thank you one and all for attending this evening, we appreciate it.